Good evening. Welcome to the combined work session, regular in-person and virtual meeting for November 9th, 2021. The first item on the work session agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance by the Westbrook Park Elementary School students.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Some great students there, Mr. Comfort. Thank you, students. The second item on the work session agenda is a presentation by Westbrook Park Elementary School Principal, Mr. Mark Comfort, on Red Ribbon Week.
Good evening, Board President Brown, school board members, Dr. McGary, and everyone here in person and at home virtually. My name is Mark Comfort, and I have the honor and privilege of being the principal of Westbrook Park Elementary School. Westbrook Park is an elementary school located in the Westbrook Park section of Upper Darby Township and has students from Clifton Heights and Westbrook Park. We are a kindergarten to fifth grade elementary school, and we're happy to include students in the district's K-5 multi-disc specialties program and autistic support program for fourth and fifth grade students. Tonight, we are presenting Red Ribbon Week at Westbrook Park. Red Ribbon Week is a national campaign to keep kids healthy and drug-free, which takes place at the end of October. This year's theme was Drug-Free Looks Good on Me. Please direct your attention to the video, which will show you how Westbrook Park celebrated Red Ribbon Week.
On Monday, we wore red to help kick off Red Ribbon Week.
On Tuesday, we wore our favorite team jersey to support being drug-free. Team up against drugs.
On Wednesday, we supported being drug-free by wearing a hat.
On Thursday, we wore crazy socks to say no to drugs. Sock it to drugs.
On Friday, we wore our fall costumes to say boo to drugs.
Proud to be drug-free.
I would also like to thank Ms. Jaden Ward, Ms. Marjorie Bates, and Ms. Nikki Nolan for their help of running Red Ribbon Week. And every day, I'm happy to work with the wonderful staff, students, and parents at Westbrook Park. As always, to the board and Dr. McGary, thank you for your continued support of Westbrook Park Elementary School.
Mark, Mark. Good question. So I love the themes that you had each day, so I just had a question. Who came up with those themes? Was that you personally, or was that...
No. So Ms. Jaden Ward, our counselor, really put together the piece. We've done, you know, some type of these things over the past couple of years. Other times, we've done PJ Day. I forget what that theme was, but we've had a couple that kind of work out. But Friday is normally always costume because that's when we do our Fall Festival Parade. So, and it's great, I would say, it's great being back in school with a school filled with children, and you get to do that. Jersey Day is my favorite as a Giants fan, a Penguins fan. What's the other jersey that I wear? Yankees, yeah, well, you guys think too. But it's great actually walking into the cafeteria in a Giants jersey and kids booing you. You wouldn't think that that's a good thing, but it builds the community in our school.
I've never experienced that. I'm a Cowboys fan.
Not at all, not at all. Thank you very much.
Great job. Thank you, Mark. Do a great job at Westbrook Park. The second item on the work session agenda is a presentation... Oh, I'm sorry. The final item on the work session agenda is a presentation by Stonehurst Hills Elementary School Principal, Ms. Melissa Wallace, titled "What Makes a Stonehurst Hills Superstar."
Thank you very much for having me here tonight. I'm really excited to showcase some of the things that are wonderful about our school. Our presentation is titled "We Are Stonehurst Strong." And the first slide will show you that we recognize and understand that our superstars, our students, parents, special adults that are responsible for our students, teachers and staff, have all been extremely resilient over these past two, almost two-ish, years. And so, last year, when I had the privilege of speaking at the board meeting, I addressed and recognized how fabulous our staff is. But we all get up every single day to do great things for kids. So this year, we thought it was very important to take the opportunity to showcase some highlights of our students' resilience in the face of adversity. Some information on our amazing kids follows in this slideshow, and stay tuned because some of the students featured in the text are also in the video that is at the end of our slideshow. So, like any school, I don't do what I do alone. I have an amazing team that helps me out, and like I said, amazing students. So I asked for input from our adults in the building about which students might be comfortable with being showcased. And our ELL teacher actually contributed to this PowerPoint because she was just very adamant about how our students work hard every day, period, but our ELL students have another barrier that could get in the way of their learning, but doesn't. And so she coined the phrase "barriers into bridges," which I absolutely love. And she says that "it can be discouraging to not be able to connect or communicate with students when there are language barriers. A smile, welcoming presence, and consistent learning routines from our dedicated Stonehurst staff turn the barriers into bridges for our ELL students. Before we know it, our ELs, which is English Language Learners, are growing and achieving. They are amazing members of our school and community." So those amazing students are resilient and obviously Stonehurst strong. So we showcased one student from each grade level so as not to take up all night with our presentation, because we have almost 500 kids enrolled, and they're all fabulous in their own way. But the first grade team said that one of their students, Salma, always gives her best effort. She loves to learn and is always willing to help others. Now, these are just words on a page, but I want you to think of a little first grader and how amazing it is that in the face of all this adversity, right? Let's say a first grader is six years old for argument's sake. Take away two years of the pandemic. This student is kind of just being plunked right into school, along with their peers as well. But she is giving her all. She is helping others, even when it's hard for her to help herself. So I just really want us all to take a minute and think about what that means, because this happens in school buildings in our district every single day, and I think that's pretty cool. The second grade team says that Reggie is a role model in and out of the classroom. He pays attention and tries his best. He is the first one to get up to help a classmate with anything. Reggie is a rockin' role model. So again, second grade student interested in helping peers, even when the day-to-day is not very easy. This is an example of a lifelong learner. Samir is Stonehurst strong because he is a model student. He is always trying his best and doesn't give up when the going gets hard. In class, he actively participates and enjoys learning. Samir is a Stonehurst smarty. And I just want to showcase once again the grit and resiliency of our students. Not just the pandemic, right? Like, learning is hard to begin with. Being a kid is not always easy, but this student is actively participating and first to volunteer to help others. Kind heart. The fourth grade team says that Radia has worked virtually and in-person this year. No matter the environment, she puts in her best effort. She can be counted on to participate in class and is always kind and respectful to her teachers and peers. She is a respectful royal. And again, learning to treat others with kindness and respect is not always easy, period, no matter who you are, right? So the fact that we have a fourth grade student with such a kind heart, again, is remarkable and is just one of the many examples of the wonderful personalities we have at Stonehurst. Perseverance. The fifth grade team says that Danny is always working hard. When he doesn't understand a math problem, he keeps going. It's a fifth grader who doesn't get it, but keeps trying. He perseveres at any task he is given. He truly has grit and is a royal through and through. Danny is a persistent pupil, and I think that right there is key. How many persistent pupils do we have in our schools and in our classrooms and our buildings and our districts? Lots and lots and lots of them, and they all deserve recognition. So, you know, if you have someone in mind, if you're at home watching, make sure you make yourself a note to tell that persistent pupil that you're proud of them. Because I went to school, we all went to school, but none of us did it in the same way as these kids who flip-flop between virtual and in-person and still need to learn to read and write and spell and do math and to do it well and have a good attitude. We ask our kids to do a lot. Frequently, we talk about how much we ask our teachers to do, and I don't want to take away from that. They do a lot. They are wonderful people. Same thing goes for our staff. But I think it's also important that we recognize what our students are asked to do on a daily basis, on a regular basis, and how they persevere, how they come through, how they keep fighting, and how our kids in particular are Stonehurst strong.
I'm Stonehurst strong because whatever I do, I never give up.
I'm Stonehurst strong because I got better and better at something that I didn't know.
I'm Stonehurst strong because I might not know something, but I just don't know it yet.
I'm Stonehurst strong because we work as a team here and we support one another.
I'm Stonehurst strong because of everyone that surrounds me. I could not be as strong as I am without the teammates I have, without the students that support me, without everyone being here just to bring me up and keep me strong.
I'm Stonehurst strong because I work with the best staff and the best students.
I'm Stonehurst strong because I'm creating a family of learners.
I am Stonehurst strong because I work with our English Language Learners, and sometimes it can be really challenging to work through the barriers that not being able to communicate presents. But I love to see the way that our staff comes together to welcome and create belonging for our students and provide consistent routines that turn those barriers into bridges for our students. And so before we know it, they are thriving members of our community.
I'm Stonehurst strong.
I'm Stonehurst strong.
I'm Stonehurst strong.
I'm Stonehurst strong.
Today is Stonehurst's birthday. I'm Stonehurst strong.
Crushed it. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to come in and address the board tonight to speak with you, to thank you for all that you do for our students and our families. And I am just thrilled to be an Upper Darby Royal, and I hope you have an excellent night. Thank you very much.
Ms. Wallace, thank you for all your hard work at Stonehurst Hills. We're lucky to have you. Before we call tonight's meeting to order, Dr. McGary, will you please outline the public participation procedures, please, sir?
Now that we've returned to in-person meetings, we are also still holding virtual meetings. Our board has taken the opportunity to continue to try to engage with the public as much as possible. What we learned from the pandemic is that we are getting a lot of participation virtually, and those who want to come in person, we welcome you here as well. If you are participating virtually this evening, you can phone in your comment tonight, or comments only, to 610-789-7200, extension 2000. Please provide your name, your address, and the specific board report you'd like to comment on this evening, and the board will take that into action before moving forward. You can also provide an email to boardmeetingcomments@upperdarbysd.org. Again, please provide your name and address and the specific report you'd like to comment on this evening, and the board will take that into consideration prior to moving forward. I see that this evening that there was only one individual who signed in in-person to speak under general comments. In order to speak under general comments at the end of the meeting, members of the public virtually would have to have sent their comments in general comments prior to 7:30 this evening, and the board would have taken that into consideration, again, under boardmeetingcomments@upperdarbysd.org or at 610-789-7200, extension 2000. Again, please, you would have needed to, and moving forward, please provide your name, your address, and that your comment is for general comments. Our process now is that those who have come in person, if you have signed in to speak or you do have a comment or a question on a report, we'll take in-person, those who have to comment in-person first, and then move to virtual comments. Board President Brown, if anybody would like me to update this as we go on throughout this evening, I'm happy to do so.
Thank you, and feel free to do that at your discretion if you feel it needs to be done. The regular in-person and virtual meeting of the Upper Darby School District Board of School Directors will please come to order. There was a closed session this evening from 5:30 PM until 7:30 PM for matters to be discussed within the limitations for closed deliberations as prescribed by Pennsylvania Act 93 of 1998. For this evening's meeting, there were personnel and litigation matters. Roll call Board Secretary, Mr. Rogers, please.
Dr. Hague.
Present.
Mr. Des Neuer.
Present.
Mr. War Savage. Mr. Neal. Mrs. Field, or Mrs. Williams, I'm sorry.
Present.
Mr. Fields.
Present.
Mrs. Mitchell.
Present.
Mrs. Curry.
Present.
Mr. Brown.
Present. I'd just like to note, Mr. Neal is excused. He is under the weather. The district posted this evening's agenda to board docs at least 24 hours prior to the commencement of this meeting. Is there a motion to approve that previously posted agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The agenda has been moved and seconded. Are there any amendments to offer?
No amendments tonight.
Thank you. The agenda has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carried. The minutes of the combined work session and regular meeting of October 12, 2021, and the special meeting of October 26, 2021 are in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public. I move for their adoption. Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Hearing none. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carried. Ms. Williams, the reporter to secretary, please.
The reporter to secretary is in the hand of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carried. The reporter to treasurer, please, Mr. Fields.
The report of the treasurer is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Hearing none. Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. We will now have the reporter of the student representatives, Randy Lane and Majabin Tepeter.
The buildings of report are Walter M. Senkow, Hillcrest Elementary, Beverly Hills Middle School, Drexel Hill Middle School, and Upper Darby High School.
For Walter M. Senkow, upon my visit to Senkow, I met with Ms. Simpson and got a glimpse of my previous school. Last week, when I went to Senkow, it was Red Ribbon Week. On Monday, the students were challenged. The classroom where with the most students wearing red would receive a prize. Moreover, as I toured the entire school, I was able to see the setup for students' lunches. Each student had their desk three feet apart from another student. This allowed each grade to eat their lunch while still talking and enjoying lunchtime with other students. Something that I was excited to hear is that Senkow has clubs now. A Science Explorer Club allows students from third grade to fifth grade to invite many science curriculums outside of school. Currently, they are taking care of real-life goldfish, and that is so amazing. This club also provides busing so that students don't have to worry about transportation and parents don't have to worry about getting the kids home safely.
I cannot visit Hillcrest Elementary School in person. However, I did receive some helpful information from their principal about what changes and events have occurred since school started. Unfortunately, some traditional events that were held in years past were not able to be accomplished. Field trips were held virtually, which is a great way to keep their energy and focus on learning. The second graders were able to visit Sugar Town Farm. It was their first farm visit for many of the students. Some events that will be happening at the school are their annual Scholastic Book Fair from November 8th to November 12th, and in-person family night on November 11th.
For Beverly Hills Middle School, I was able to meet with Dr. Urson. Dr. Urson and I toured the entire building throughout my tour. I saw terrific renovations that took place, such as the bathrooms, which I was very jealous of. I also noticed that during lunchtime, students had desks implemented and spaced to three feet to talk to their peers while enjoying their lunch. Due to the limited space, BH put more desks in their smaller gym, allowing more kids to eat. Furthermore, BH has tried to enforce COVID safety. Therefore, there are different sets of stairs labeled to have smoother transitions between classes. BH is doing its very best to have a great year.
Upon my visit to Drexel Hill Middle School, I was able to gain further knowledge about their lunch procedures. Half the grade eats their lunch in the auditorium, and half eats their lunch in the cafeteria. They will switch these settings after the first marking period. Their teachers and administrators try their best to uphold the COVID guidelines in the classrooms and during lunch. The most challenging part for the school administrators is trying to maintain traditions and events concerning COVID. They have been thinking about the upcoming musical Into the Woods and the Winter Concert. There is consideration for audience seating and student participation. The middle school expresses their thanks to the board for all of your support.
And lastly, for the Upper Darby High School, students have been practicing for this season's play club. They performed this last week, and the play was great. The students had lots of enthusiasm, and student staff and families were there to cheer on the actors and actresses. There are upcoming events such as the Powderpuff Game and Homecoming. Powderpuff recently acquired their teammates, and the game is on November 11th at 6:00 PM. I bet the seniors will crush the juniors. So the Homecoming Court was announced, and the Homecoming Show and pep rally is on November 22nd. The high school will operate on an early dismissal schedule. As fall sports come to an end, the winter sports start tryouts. Winter sports practices and games will begin at the end of this month, continuing to late February. And that is all for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. You always do a great job. We really appreciate the informative report. The budget of personnel and enrollment reports have been made available to the board and the public, and I recorded as part of the record. No vote is required. We will now have the report of the superintendent, Dr. Dan McGary.
Thank you, Board President Brown. Good evening, Upper Darby Royals. President Edward Brown, members of the board, administration, teachers, staff, students, parents, and members of the community of Upper Darby School District. Thank you, Mark. Unfortunately, we couldn't play your video, but I really appreciate it, and to your team for their efforts during Red Ribbon Week, and to Ms. Wallace, I struggled with like you did, Mark. To Ms. Wallace, thank you for sharing what it means to be Stonehurst strong, and there's a lot of effort and time going in there with you and the teachers, and I really appreciate the effort that you put forth every single day. This evening, I wanted to provide an update on our continued efforts to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. Recognize the students and the success of our students in the classroom and out of the classroom. Congratulate our chief financial officer, Mr. Craig Rogers. Take a moment to thank our home and schools for their continued support of our students and to encourage all of our families to engage with their home and schools. Let me first begin this evening by celebrating the outstanding academic achievement efforts of our National Merit Scholarship semifinalist, Shabab Alam. On average, the National Merit Scholarship process begins with 1.5 million entrants, cut down to the highest 50,000 scores. The top 50,000 scores are then cut down to the top 34,000 scores, and a portion of those students are recognized as commended students. I'm happy to report that Sebastian Mostek and Stanley Gian have been recognized as commended students. Shabab Alam has made it beyond the commended student status and is now a semifinalist. He has been recognized as scoring among the highest students in the Commonwealth. Shabab has the ability to advance onto the next level of competition and be recognized as a finalist. Again, please join me in celebrating our two commended scholars, Sebastian Mostek and Stanley Gian, as well as our National Merit Scholarship semifinalist, Shabab Alam. I would like to also thank their families and all of our teachers and administrators who have worked tirelessly to support these students and their efforts. We are so blessed and fortunate to have such outstanding students in our district, so let's just say thank you to them. I would like to now also recognize our award-winning Marching Royals and our band. Under the direction of Band Director Alex Seewa and his team, I am proud to announce the following. The Marching Royals competed against 16 bands within five divisions on October 23rd in the U.S. Bands PA State Championship at Westchester University. The Upper Darby High School Marching Royals were up against three other Pennsylvania high school bands in their particular division. Band Director Seewa, his team, and our very talented students were awarded the state championship title for Group 1A. In addition to this wonderful accomplishment, the band also earned awards for Best Music, Best Percussion, and Best Color Guard. In total, the 2021 PA State Championship Show hosted 16 bands, again, within five divisions. The Marching Royals also earned the right to compete in the U.S. Bands National Championship in Allentown, PA on November 6th. Many of us were fortunate enough to have a sneak peek performance on November 4th. The Marching Royals finished sixth out of 15 bands competing in the national championship in Allentown, so congratulations to our band. And the band also earned Best Percussion and Second Place Award for Color Guard, so it's clear that they carried on that success locally and then on a much grander scale in Allentown on November 6th. So congratulations to Mr. Seewa. And I just also would like to take a moment, attending football games on Friday evenings and being there to support the cheerleaders and the football team and the band. Our band parents put in countless hours supporting the band program at Upper Darby High School, and so I want to congratulate again Mr. Seewa, obviously his team and our students, but also the parents who are there pushing in the cold and supporting our students. So thank you to our parents as well. I'm thankful to report that our schools have been open and remained open for in-person instruction this school year. I believe that the collective efforts of our parents and students, our staff, and our administration have all worked together to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. We believe that the ongoing efforts of masking, proper hygiene, including handwashing, and vaccinations have allowed us to open our schools and keep them open. We have now added to our mitigation efforts by implementing our test-to-stay program. Students and staff who are unvaccinated and asymptomatic may participate in more frequent testing in order to remain in school. In addition to our test-to-stay program, we are hosting a vaccination clinic with Children's, with the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia on December 20th at Upper Darby High School, with a second dose scheduled on January 10th. We're also aware that the governor will be lifting the masking mandate after January 17th, 2022. After January 17th, it will become a local decision as to whether or not we require masking in our schools. We will review several factors before we make a recommendation on masking in our schools. We will talk about positivity rates, community transition rates, and vaccination rates within our schools. So it's very important to families that are listening this evening. I know there's a lot of conversations about masking, and there's a lot of hesitation about vaccinations. We will be putting out more information, providing as much to our parents and our students as possible. I will use myself as an example. I have had... I have had three shots, two Pfizer shots and a booster Pfizer shot. Two of my three children have been vaccinated. My third child will be fully vaccinated. So I've gone around to the home and school meetings, and I'm making it clear tonight, too, that vaccination is a process and a step that will allow us to get back closer to somewhat of a more normal school environment. Obviously, parents and staff will do what they think is best. But moving away from this masking, it does seem like the vaccination process provides us much more relief moving forward. Ultimately, our goal is to get as many students to return to in-person instruction and feel safe. And so to the board, we will be providing you with a series of if-then options regarding masking after we come out of winter break. For the next portion of my report this evening, I will be recognizing the support of our Chief Financial Officer, Craig Rogers. Craig Rogers has the very challenging task of not just working for me, but of balancing an over $200 million budget, while at the same time attending to and understanding all the educational needs of our students and staff. It's a very rare, and we're very fortunate that we have a CFO in our organization who sits in and attends to as many educational and curricular meetings. Sometimes, business managers will say, "That's not my responsibility. Tell me what you need." But I want to say and acknowledge Craig as a rare Chief Financial Officer who is engaged in the educational side as much as he is the financial side. We've certainly been able to better navigate this pandemic because of Craig's support, financial skill set, and creative problem solving. But more importantly, because he is very attuned to the needs of our students, staff, and community. Craig has recently completed the Pennsylvania Association of School Business Officials, PASBO, professional certification process in an effort to continue his personal and professional education. This recognition and certificate highlights Craig's tremendous work ethic and ability to meet very high ethical and professional standards. And I wanted to congratulate him on earning this certificate. Since you were so frugal with the budget, we didn't have enough money to get it framed. Finally, this evening, I wanted to thank the Home and School Associations throughout the district for continuing to advocate for the students in their home schools and throughout the district. Ms. Buford and I, as well as some other administrators, have been meeting with parents, staff, and home and school members during the month of October in the morning and in the evening during home and school meetings throughout the month of November. I want to also thank Mr. War Savage, Board President Brown, Mr. Fields, other members of the board who've been able to attend those meetings. I know we're asking a lot of both doing sometimes in the morning and in the evening. But I want to thank the board members who were able to make it to those meetings. I'm supported, obviously, by the Board of School Directors who attend those sessions, teachers. It's wonderful how many teachers come out to those home and school meetings. It really speaks to the community that we're trying to build. But also, I'm joined by central office people. Dr. Council joins me. Ms. Buford, our Director of Communications, the Director of Secondary Education, Dr. Manfree, and the Director of Elementary Education, Frank Salerno. When you think about it, oftentimes, we're at an 8 o'clock in the morning meeting, and then we'll jump from a 6 o'clock meeting and then a 6:30 and then a 7:00, so the nights go long sometimes, but we're trying to engage as much as we can. Our schools really need as much support from our parents and guardians as possible because we all know that a strong relationship between home and school really improves student well-being. I wanted to share a video presentation that's really a recruitment of encouraging folks to participate and become part of our home and school.
Home and School is a way that parents and teachers and administrators collaborate to support the academics and the students in the schools.
It's a place where people can make a difference and use their talents to enrich the entire school community.
Until this year, my experience has just been attending meetings.
And those meetings include teachers and administrators.
The parents ask questions, make suggestions. They've helped find answers.
And then we work to figure out what the community needs.
We are continuing to develop new programs and new initiatives to, again, empower the children.
Brainstorm different ideas to help with the community and fundraisers and chaperoning trips and things of that nature.
They talk about all the events that are happening, right? There's many events to tell us about.
We raise money. There's bake sales or
Bean Go Night or Harvest Fest.
They've had social events that brings the community together so that parents can meet each other and the kids can play with each other outside of the classroom.
Dances and parties and different classroom events.
Just last week, we had a movie night, which that was a first.
Basically, Home and School, we help make all the fun activities happen, give our kids something to celebrate and have fun and remember when they move on to middle school and high school.
It benefits your kids. I mean, we're all in this together. We want to get our kids the good education and the extras that the district can't always afford. So this is the way that we do that.
But also, it's to help build community.
Just the fellowship of everybody coming together and taking pictures and getting to know other families and learn who could be your support system if you ever needed one.
The collateral benefits after years of participating and building relationship has come in handy in many different ways. I've met some of the best friends through this partnership, and it's benefited my family and myself personally.
Parents, please come out and help and support. We need you guys. We want to do more. We want to build up our community. We want to get everybody involved.
It's a lot of work, but it's easy work. So we always need members. We always need people to show up.
You can be involved just a little bit or help out a lot, but any help is always appreciated and needed.
So come aboard, and we can support one another, again, to build our community.
Did I miss anything?
No, I think that was beautiful.
Okay.
That's exactly right.
Ms. Buford and Jason, thank you very much for helping put that together and organizing that. It's a wonderful opportunity to engage. I also want to thank the Home and School Associations, the building principals, for allowing me to jump on your meetings and steal some of your time. I try to keep it as short as I can, but we sometimes have such an engagement that back and forth that we stay on a little longer. And to the Home and School, I really appreciate, in many ways, your litmus test. We processed through right now. We've had conversations last night. We had a meeting with the Home and School, and we talked about the changes in the masking, the vaccination process. And I am able to get a sense and a feel from our community where they are, how they feel about the decisions that we're making before we move forward. So it's been a wonderful opportunity of trying to engage either 8 o'clock in the morning over coffee with staff and with parents, and then again at night in a virtual setting. So I really appreciate the Home and Schools allowing me the opportunity to jump on their agendas and give good feedback. Again, another highlight is Board President Brown and I were with Damian, were involved in a Walter M. Senko meeting. And in Walter M. Senko, it was just a virtual set of tiles of students, elementary school students, asking questions about the vaccination process, about opportunities. It was so cool and so much fun to engage with students. And then to jump off of that meeting and jump off into another meeting. It's really wonderful, the engagement that takes place. And also, the teachers. We allow teachers and ask teachers to participate in the Home and School meetings, and oftentimes, they'll ask a question for clarity. And so across the board, from students to staff to parents, it's been a wonderful way for us to gather feedback moving forward. Damian, I don't know if you want to add anything to that before I close, but you probably will later on tonight, so I apologize during your portion. So I apologize. Board President Brown, I'm excited by the work that we are doing here to support our staff, our students, the community, and the Board of School Directors. This concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. Such a positive report. So many wonderful things to report from our district. So thank you for all your hard work and your staff and all the other administrators. Thank you for all your hard work. I just want to add about the Home and School. I think I would be remiss if I didn't mention the fact that Mrs. Curry and I really got our start. I mean, I think a lot of the board members on here started with Home and School and just became, you know, long-term advocates of the district, starting with Home and School. And that's how we got our start. We worked together closely at Highland Park. And Holly Clark was featured in that video, and she's been serving so long. She was on my staff when I was a Home and School president, and she's still serving, and she's the president now. So that just shows you her long-term commitment to the district. So she's fantastic. Just wanted to add that. We will now have an update on the October 26, 2021 Education and Pupils Services Committee meeting. Mrs. Curry will read the summary. No, Mrs. Mitchell, sorry. Mrs. Mitchell will read the summary.
Thank you, President Brown. The Education and Pupils Services meeting was held on October 26th, as President Brown said. We had two agenda items. The first one was the Elementary Science Program for Board Action. You'll see it in the report tonight, the Instruction and Curriculum Report. Mrs. Elizabeth Riches, the Supervisor of Science, Family and Consumer Science and Health and Physical Education, presented an elementary science program to be implemented in the 2022-2023 school year. The recommended program, TWIG Science Next Gen, is a science program aligned in the Next Gen science standards. This is a very exciting program. And the program focuses on investigation, STEM integration, and real-world phenomena. If approved tonight, the adoption would include both print and digital access to teachers and students, and it's on our reports tonight. The second item is the Elementary Progress Report update. It was just an informational update about the new progress reports that did go out. And if you would like to review the presentations or the video, they are available on the website under School Board. And we had no public comments, and that's the conclusion of my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Mitchell. We will now have an update on the October 26, 2021 Finance and Operations Committee meeting. Mr. Fields will read the summary.
Thank you, Board President Brown. The Finance and Operations Committee met Tuesday, October 26th at 7:00. There were three items on the agenda. The Eastern Delaware County Bicycle Prioritization Study was reviewed. This is purely informational. David Schwartz provided an update on the prioritization study. This is about putting bike lanes on some of our roads so that, to encourage people to bike to school or bike around the township instead of getting in a car. A survey was set out, so if you're letting that sit and you're also a link to a survey was made available. So if you haven't had a chance to do that, please go right ahead. Item number two was the 2022-2023 Budget Act One Timeline. This was also informational. We have the same presentation just about every year. Mr. Rogers just changes the years. The Business Office reviewed important deadlines associated with the 2022-2023 budget timeline and discussed future steps. As I said, that was also informational. And then the third item, which requires board action, was changes to the policy for Meetings 006 and Policy 903 for public participation in board meetings. As Director Mitchell said, those presentations are available online. There'll also be further discussion about the policy changes, further presentation about the policy changes later in tonight's meeting. And there were no public comments. And that concludes my summary.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fields. The Instruction and Curriculum Report, Vice President Curry.
Thank you, Board President Brown. The Instruction and Curriculum Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board?
I noticed that I don't actually see the TWIG Science, and I just wanted to make sure that it's just maybe, you know, a holdup on some details of the contract and not that there's an omission that needs to be corrected. I just Ms. Mitchell just read about this great, very exciting science program and that it was intended to be on tonight's report, and I just noticed it. I don't
Actually, it's on page four at the top. The Board of School Directors approves TWIG Science Next Gen elementary curriculum. It is on page four.
I see it now. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Scrolling through, I couldn't find it.
Yep. It's good to verify, to make sure it's there. Are there any other comments from the board? Okay, hearing none. Are there any comments from the public? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. Personnel report, please. Mrs. Mitchell.
Thank you, President Brown. The Personnel Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. Before I move for its adoption, I do want to wish our four retirees a safe and healthy retirement. You deserve it for all the work that you've done for us. Thank you. To our new staff members, I welcome you to the Upper Darby School District family. Know that the support that you need is here. If you need it, the administration will be there for you. The next thing I would like to acknowledge is our all of our staff who is mentoring new teachers. It's listed on page five. There's a ton of teachers mentoring our newest teachers, and we just appreciate the hard work that you're doing. Next, I just want to acknowledge, and I'm sorry this is such a lengthy thing, but there's a lot going on, is teachers who have met their tenure and are becoming permanent professional employees tonight. And with that being said, congratulations, and I move for the report's adoption as stated.
Second.
As you said, Ms. Mitchell, there's so many wonderful life accomplishments and new hires, but not that everybody shouldn't be highlighted, but there are two in particular on this report in the retirement section. Mr. Strunk, who's been recognized by this board historically, is kind of a legendary employee of this school district. So, Mr. Strunk, if you're watching this evening, thank you for all of your years and years and years of dedication to the Upper Darby School District and the Maintenance and Facilities Department. I mean, he took so much pride in his work in the school district, and he's been I graduated with one of his sons from Upper Darby High School, so he's just a wonderful person, and he will certainly be missed. His dedication to the school district and the pride that he has had here over the years will very much be missed. And then to Ms. Eileen Hirschman, who's announcing her retirement. Ms. Hirschman has worn many, many hats here in the school district and been somebody who's been flexible and willing to take on new opportunities. In Pennsylvania, there are thousands and thousands of data points a year that you're responsible for, and it's only grown over the years. So she was one of the first in handling the Pennsylvania Information Management System PINs for the school district. She helped with registration. She helped with so much data collection. And then we asked her to shift over to the HR department with Dr. Council. And I could tell you that Eileen has just such a wonderful personality, and we will certainly miss her into retirement, but I wanted to thank her for what she's done here for the school district. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure.
I just wanted to also say with the retirements, Mrs. Mitchell said it beautifully, you know, thanking the retirees. I see on here is Ms. Carol Pearson, who had been at Highland Park for years and years and years and had each one of my children. So thank you, Ms. Pearson, for all the work that you put in at Highland Park, and I hope you enjoy your retirement.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I think there was, it's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record.
President Brown?
Yes.
Damian War Savage, I just wanted to abstain from Page Eight, Subsection Hourly Hallway Monitor Appointments. I am actually married to one of those individuals, but for the balance of the report, I approve.
Thank you. Any other abstaining? Okay, the motion carries. The Policy Report, Mrs. Desnoyers.
Thank you, President Brown. So this evening, for the Policy Report first reading, we're going to do something a little bit different in that the one item on the Policy Report first reading is time-sensitive. So let me read the following statement. Whereas the deadline for submission of applications to open a charter school within the district is approaching, and whereas the statutory period for review of such applications is short, and whereas should the administration deem itself in need of legal support in adversarial proceedings and find itself unable to utilize the district solicitor's office regarding such an application, there would be limited time to approve the change in policy and obtain such legal support, and whereas the only change to the policy relates to that single item, and now therefore pursuant to Policy 003 and solely as it relates to the proposed change to Policy 140, I move that the board suspends the portion of Policy 003 stating that the board shall not adopt a proposed amendment of a policy unless it has been proposed at a previous board meeting. So this will, this motion will allow the board to deliberate upon, and should it choose to do so, adopt proposed change to Board Policy 140 at this evening's meeting. Thank you. Thank you.
I second it.
Thank you. Do we vote on, all those in favor?
I would like to make a comment.
Sure, please.
Just to confirm, the one single change to Policy 140 is an addition of language that authorizes the administration to retain separate, independent legal counsel to advise on researching and preparing a report on charter school applications. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I just confirm, the, just so that everybody is aware, this motion is simply to allow for a single reading tonight. You still are going to be debating whether to make that change separately.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments from the board on that piece before we vote? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain and state your name for the record. All right, the motion carries.
And President Brown?
Yes.
I believe I now have to move that we adopt the policy change.
Yep.
I move to do so.
Does it need a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. You have a comment? Oh. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Okay, all the, I think we voted, right? All those in favor, we said, all those in favor, I'm doing it in the right order. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. I think that takes us to the Policy Report.
The Policy Report second reading.
Okay.
So the Policy Report second reading is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board?
President Brown, I have a comment.
Yes.
So the changes being considered for a second reading and adoption tonight are changes to Policy 006 Meetings and Policy 903 Public Participation at Board Meetings. And most of the changes are due to changes in the Sunshine Act that governs open meetings. That includes adding the requirement that agendas be posted 24 hours in advance of meetings and that agendas be approved at the beginning of each meeting, things like that. In addition, there are some small district-initiated changes. For instance, the term "official meeting introduced in September" is being changed to "open meeting" to agree with the Sunshine Act. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the board? Okay, hearing none. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The Supplies Report, please, Mr. War Savage.
Thank you, President Brown. The Supplies Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move forward with its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The Facilities Report, the Use of Facilities Report, and the Donation Report, please, Mr. Fields.
The Facilities Report, the Use of Facilities Report, and the Donation Report are in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public. I move for their adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board?
Okay, I just wanted to reiterate, in a future meeting, we'll be going over how we define who gets the youth rate, because I see there are some youth programs on this Use of Facilities Report that are still listed as regular rates. So we'll be looking to expand. Anyway, we will be looking to revise the language of who qualifies for youth, not just youth sports, for the youth rate.
Also, on that Youth Facility Report, I wanted to welcome back Shooting Stars to the auditorium for the rehearsals and the performances. Also, on the Donation Report, so we had two donations that are really neat. From Pine Street Carpenter's in Westchester, we received 11 bikes for district elementary students to encourage them to bike to school, and I just think that's awesome. And then from Wawa, there was a donation of 11 computers to the students of Garreford, which I also thought was great. And I wanted to mention, Wawa has a policy, like you can start at Wawa as a cashier, and you can end up in their corporate offices. I taught those people when I was a software instructor for my software company, and it's really something to see someone who, a couple of years before, was ringing up, you know, sodas and hoagies, and now they're working in their IT department. So, just for people to keep that in mind. And really, my thanks go out to both companies for making these really generous donations.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. Are there any other comments from the board? Hearing none. Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain. I will abstain from the Use of Facilities Report. A nonprofit, Men of Action Brothers of Faith, that I'm a part of, is on the Use of Facilities Report, so I abstain from that particular item, but approve all others. Any other abstaining? The Finance and Budget Report, please, Dr. Hague.
The Finance and Budget Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. That takes us to our collateral assignment reports. We'll start with the Delaware County Community College. Vice President Curry.
Thank you, Board President Brown. The Delaware County Community College had its liaison dinner that all, it was virtual this year, that the superintendents and all board members were invited to attend. I know that Dr. McGary and President Brown, and I'm not sure what other board members were able to attend that night, but they did do a comprehensive report about what's going on at the college. And one of the things that I wanted to highlight is they have, the Chief of Staff and Vice President for Strategic Planning went over a program that they have right now called Moonshot for Equity. And it is a program that is scheduled to help assist with equity in the college, addressing equity gaps. And so by partnering with DCCC and Westchester University to identify common strategies and equity objectives, targets, metrics, and timelines, and by recommending proven equity best practices and policies, by examining current practices to identify gaps, needs, early alerts, and case management, by providing training to develop faculty and staff in equity building, and by matching prospective students facing equity gaps with DCCC and WCU staff and faculty. Excited to hear about this equity program that DCC has, especially considering total enrolled students by the school district in fall of 2021. This fall for Upper Darby is 1,442 students. And then the totally, in the dual enrolled program, we have about 53 students that are enrolled. So Delaware County Community College is a really big part of our community, and we thank them for the update and the dinner, the virtual dinner.
Thank you, Vice President Curry. Delaware County Intermediate Unit, Mrs. Mitchell.
Thank you, President Brown. The Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors met on November 3 for their regular scheduled meeting. We just had some basic things going on this month, the approval to support professional development for certain school districts, some educational and community partners with families. One of the most important things that I'd like to highlight is we approved some dual enrollment agreements between Delaware County Community College and the Technical School, as well as Eastern University and the Technical School. So if our students attend DCTS, they have those opportunities. And another big item was we approved to convert the position of Assistant Executive Director to Assistant Director of Teaching and Learning. And that concludes my report for this month. Our next, our committee meeting is tomorrow night, and our next regularly scheduled meeting is on December 1.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Mitchell. Legislative Council is tomorrow morning at 7:30 a.m., so I'll be attending that, and I'll be able to provide information about that in the future. There was a PSBA Leaders Exchange today at 12:30 p.m., and they went over some of the legislative items, and I will detail those, the Senate bills and the House bills that are education-related. I do have some information about that, so I'll be able to report that. Sure?
I just want to make a comment that our neighboring school district is in the fight for the lawsuit, and they will be going up to the Capitol steps to support that lawsuit with Children's First and some of the other education advocacy groups that are in support of getting that fair funding lawsuit completed. So they're starting in, I think the start is Friday.
Friday, yeah. PSBA provided a link to watch it, so we'll be able to get that out, if, you know, get that information out, the link. Thank you. The Mendenhall Tyson Scholarship Committee, Dr. Hague.
Nothing to report at this time.
Okay, thank you. Home and School, Mr. War Savage.
Thank you, President Brown. Just to touch again on what Dan had, Dr. McGary, had mentioned earlier, that the rest of November will be the Dan McGary Home and School Tour, Fall 2021. So far, it's been going actually really well, and I want to just congratulate, like, acknowledge the really intelligent questions that a lot of the students have been asking during some of these home and school sessions, specifically about COVID, the pandemic, vaccines, how that works. And even though some of us, and I can only speak for myself as an adult, there's a lot of information, a lot of things that on the daily that I just take for granted that are just second nature in my mind, but when I hear it regurgitated through a child, through a student who has a different mindset and different understanding, but it's so, adults are jaded, children are supposed to not be, and just to hear that unfiltered kind of inquisitive nature was just, I pick up on that stuff. And that's such a hallmark to what this school community represents, so just wanted to make that point.
Thank you very much for that report. What's next? Technology, I don't, I'm not going to pick on you, Dr. McGary. I think we're good with technology, right?
Yeah, and to be honest with you right now, I'm not, I wouldn't have the answer right now.
Okay, all right, no problem. I think we're good. PSBA, we kind of talked about that. Vice President Curry and I kind of mentioned PSBA-related information. I don't have anything else. Mr. Des Noiers, do you have any other, any PSBA information?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Mr. War Savage, okay, thanks. Policy liaisons, Mr. Des Noiers. I know Mr. Neal is out today, but do you have any other policy information?
Yes, I would just like to bring up again, this was mentioned this summer when the board adopted a policy on district-owned social media accounts. But PSBA is currently working to develop a model policy on personal social media use by board members, employees, and students. And so that will be coming at some point in the not-too-distant future. This board will be asked to review and possibly adopt that policy. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Des Noiers. Communication, Mrs. Mitchell, or Dr. Hague?
Just thank you again for the opportunity to communicate out monthly to the school community. For anyone watching tonight or in the room, if you want to get a copy of the monthly updates, they are listed under the School Board tab, and you'll be seeing one coming in your inbox in the next few weeks.
Thank you very much. That takes us to old business. Is there any old business from board members? Mr. War Savage?
Yes, thank you, President Brown. Just wanted to highlight a few quick things. One of them was myself and Vice President Curry were invited by Highland Park to go and read to their student population, I believe. Mrs. Curry, can you give me the name of the program?
Yeah, it's called the Teach Program for First Graders.
Yes, and did you actually want to explain a little bit more about that and how we?
Oh, sure. It's a sponsorship that's been going on, I think by the Rotary Club, that has supported Highland Park with this particular program where the teachers and other volunteers go out to the community to read. The kids are really, really excited every year. This year, we, Mrs. DeVito and the group that put that together, they actually made options for us, because it was a nice day, to meet at Sellers and at Highland Park, out in the yard. And so, you know, during COVID, people didn't have, some people in the houses, and they made that available. So the reading was happening all over Highland Park.
Yeah, it was definitely awesome. And speaking of school activities, I also was just a, visited the Aromantic Harvest Fest the other day. Was very awesome to run into Principal Reack and reminisce about Aromantic, which I seem to do every time I drop by there, since I graduated from there some time ago. And there was one other thing I did want to share on behalf of the board, thanks to an awesome faculty member, Ms. Conley, who shared this information with us, if everyone's okay with me reading the statement. "We would like to take a moment to recognize our veterans and the Veterans Day holiday on Thursday. We know that there are many veterans in our community and that some of them struggle with wounds, both visible and invisible, on a daily basis. We are so grateful to those who have sacrificed so much in the service of our country and are aware of the great debt we owe them. We also like to thank those who serve our country at home, including members of our National Guard. Our very own Nick Meehan has served in the US National, pardon me, US Army National Guard for 12 years and will be deployed again at the end of this month. Our students, faculty, staff, and board will be thinking of him and his family during this deployment."
Thank you, Mr. War Savage. Is there any other old business from board members? Is there any new business from board members? "We are now at the time for the public hearing. We will call on Upper Darby residents who sign in to address the board in the order in which they signed in, followed by email and phone comments. We would ask that you come forward, give your name and address, and present your comments in the three-minute time limit. In accordance with Policy 903, the time allotted for general comments, both in person and submitted comments, will not exceed one hour." So we'll start with Emma Gray.
Good evening. My name is Emma Gray, and I'm a senior student at Upper Darby High School. I'm in the Medical Careers Program at Delaware County Technical School. I'm a member of choir and encore singers, but most important to me, I'm one of three captains of the Upper Darby Dance Team. Ever since I joined the team as a freshman, it has shown me nothing but support. The dancers have lifted me up when I needed it time and time The dancers have lifted me up when I needed it, time and time again. Last year, dance practices and performances couldn't happen due to virtual learning and COVID-19 regulations, so this year, I was so excited to pick it up and dust it off with my new role as captain. Along with leading dance team, I'm also one of the students leading the seniors' homecoming performance. We have been choreographing routines and practicing vigorously for the past couple weeks, and the more than 20 of us have grown closer together with each practice. It has slowly come to our attention that our parents cannot attend homecoming due to COVID-19 regulations. The only parents and families who can attend are those with children on the homecoming court. Please hear me when I say, we understand why our mothers, fathers, and siblings cannot come support us. As someone with family members and friends who are at high risk for COVID-19 complications, I know that we all want to keep each other safe. Tonight, on behalf of the Upper Darby Dance Team, the seniors' homecoming performers, as well as the African Culture Club, who are also performing at homecoming and could not attend tonight, I ask the school board for fairness. Parents and families came to support their children performing in the fall play a couple weekends ago. Parents and families have been coming to support their children at their soccer, basketball, and tennis games. Parents and families have been coming to support their children on the football team at their games. So why is it that these rules and regulations only apply to the groups performing at homecoming? We, the seniors on the dance team, the homecoming performers, and the African Culture Club propose that you, the school board, allow one guest per senior at homecoming. I can get Mrs. Sakers, Mr. Hensel, and any other administrator a definite list of all the senior performers, and we can have the guests sign in with their name and the name of the student performing who they came to support at the gate on the day of the event, November 22nd. We can buy our guests their own ticket once they go on sale. The UD Dance Team is one of the best, if not the best, thing that happened to me in my entire high school career. It is near and dear to my heart, and I really want my mom to be able to come see me in my last big performance. I promised the underclassmen of the team that I would help them grow into beautiful members of society who value kindness and fairness. How can I do this when we aren't receiving the same treatment? All the other sports events allow parents to attend. This is our sport. Dance team practices three days a week, with one of those being for the select group of dancers who perform at home basketball games, and the senior performers practice four days a week, in addition to some off-campus practices. We dance for exercise, as well as to be a part of a community whose energy is unmatched. We work just as hard as the other sports teams, as we, we work just as hard as all the other sports teams, and we deserve to have our parents come cheer us on just as much as all the other sports teams. Thank you for your time and consideration."
Emma, don't leave. Dr. McGary would like to address you.
I want to let you know that I understand you're a wonderful student here at the high school, and I think you had a conversation with an assistant principal about this earlier today or this week, and they were trying to get back hold of you, but I think you go to Delaware County Technical School, and so they couldn't get a hold of you in the schedule today. But I did hear from Dr. Manfree and Ms. Simone that they are going to change their process and make it so that they can have parents come out and support that piece of it. So they're going to be changing their plans. They've already shared some of this with our students, but they couldn't get a hold of you today, so I just wanted to pass that along.
That's great to hear.
That your voice was heard by Mr. Hensel and by Mrs. Simone, and they're going to create a plan for you.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Sure. Thank them.
Makes me feel good. There's no more signed-in speakers. Ms. Buford, are there any, I think, sorry, I don't think there's any online, I have the document open, so I'd just like for you to say it officially.
There are no public comments.
Is there a motion for the adjournment of the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.[1772.46][1772.46][music]